I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sadie, can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsmere?
Here.
Counselor Gate?
Here.
Counselor Hughes?
Here.
Counselor Licky?
Here.
Counselor Strobel?
Here.
Counselor Tembusch?
Present.
Mayor Drinkland?
Uh, here, thank you. Okay, we are at the first citizen and community group comment. Do I have anybody in the holder?
Yes, Bennett Johnson, I'll bring her in.
All right, great, thank you. Hey Bennett, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So at the last city council meeting that I attended, I talked about the need for a formal business plan, and I offered to present my PowerPoint on that subject to you guys if you were interested. And Mayor, you asked staff to contact me, so I just wanted to let you know that I haven't been contacted by anyone. But this week I want to talk about economic development, and in my opinion, real economic development is in the hands of the private sector, not government. And if I had my way, government would get out of the way of private sector economic development. But since that rarely happens, or never happens, here are my thoughts on economic development from a government perspective. And I have three points that I'm going to make tonight.
Okay.
In my opinion, government should support economic development by fostering an environment in which economic development is not impeded, but rather is valued and supported. That means creating a business environment in which the private sector can flourish. So I think that's one of the things that government can do. When, contrary to that, when we first moved to Estacada, and I'm not talking about present staff, because people have been pretty good to us the last few years. But when we first moved to Estacada more than eighteen years ago, city government threw numerous obstacles at us, supposedly to make sure that our operation would not harm Estacada. The city listened to uninformed, incompetent, in my opinion, consultants who claimed our business would harm the water treatment system in Estacada. And nearly nineteen years later, none of what they predicted has come to pass. We were treated differently than other businesses. We incurred expenses that other businesses did not have to pay. And we had to fight tooth and nail to keep our door, uh, to open our doors in the first place and keep them open, all based on incorrect information. So why Estacada treated us to such a hostile business environment will always baffle me. But that's something that, um, that Estacada or any other city can address, is trying to make sure that the environment that you're presenting to businesses and potential businesses is positive. So my second point, I put business into two basic categories, types of businesses. One is foundational, and the other is auxiliary. Foundational businesses are businesses like manufacturing, traded sector, if you're not familiar with that term. That means, um, that the products are sold and shipped outside of the immediate area. And some service, uh, businesses are also foundational. And most businesses that create products are foundational. Auxiliary businesses, on the other hand, are the ones that build up around the foundational businesses. That's businesses like restaurants, banks, clothing stores, you know, things that are service related. And as an example, my brewery is both foundational and auxiliary. The brewery part of it is manufacturing and traded sector. And the restaurant is an auxiliary business. So government, in my opinion again, should focus its effort on foundational and only on foundational businesses. Without those kinds of businesses, the auxiliary businesses cannot survive. Auxiliary businesses will naturally follow when there is a healthy base of foundational businesses. Since Ken and I have been in business in Estacada, we have seen more than thirty restaurant and hospitality type businesses go out of business, which means people put money into it and lost, you know, basically their life savings on businesses that did not stand a chance in the first place, because there were not enough foundational businesses in the area to support them. There, there are other things involved, like housing and jobs and all kinds of things that help, uh, support a healthy economic community. But the, it all leads in the end back to a healthy base of foundational businesses, which leads to my third point. Using government resources to increase auxiliary businesses is, in my opinion, a waste of those resources. The shit, city should not be in the business of developing coffee shops, or restaurants, or sporting goods stores, or food carts. Like I said, if you have a strong base of foundational businesses, then auxiliary businesses will pop up on their own, and they will have a much better chance of success. Government shouldn't be, in my opinion, purchasing real estate and renting it to auxiliary businesses. Again, a waste of resources, which also has the added disadvantage of artificially inflating the real estate market value. So please consider this when and if you choose to work on a strategic plan. If the city insists on involving itself in economic development, then make sure your resources are planned around increasing foundational businesses, which means you have a plan in place. You hire people who have that kind of skill and expertise, proven track record in, in recruiting and, and working with foundational businesses. Your plan will determine what kinds of resources and what kind of people you need to have in place. And finally, just for the record, when the city cultivates things like food carts, some of your bricks and mortar businesses, like me, feel like it's a kick in the teeth. Because we've been here for years, we own real estate, we pay taxes on that real estate. We, um, and then the city goes along and helps bring in more competition. Again, we've watched more than thirty such businesses go under, and it looks to me like a bunch of food carts couldn't even make it here either, because the first wave of them have already left. So why the city would spend fifteen minutes on food carts in the name of economic development is a complete mystery to me. So that's all I have for today.
We thank you Bennett, thank you. All right. Any more people in the queue? Are there any questions for Bennett? I guess she's already left, sorry. Um, anybody, anybody else left in the queue?
I don't see anybody with their hands raised, but if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak, please use the raise hand function now. Bennett would like to come back in.
Okay, great, bring her back here.
The only reason I, I asked to come back in is because Sean said, did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we answered them all. Anybody got any questions for Bennett before she, uh, Joel?
Uh, Bennett, um, you, you seem to have some really good knowledge when it comes down to, uh, the business and the, and you should have some pretty in-depth thoughts on those. I, I'm looking forward to having a chance for you to kind of present, uh, in a more instruction, uh, instruction type of, uh, meeting to kind of show us more what you're talking about, especially talking more about the, uh, business development plan. But, uh, outside of that, I would definitely love to sit down with you on a one-on-one basis and, uh, hear more about what you have to say on a deeper ba, on a deeper, uh, deeper level. So maybe I can also bring that back to the council for, for everybody, so.
Sure, I've offered, I've offered for years to help in these kinds of things. And, um, so, you know, if you want to have, you know, chat about this kind of stuff, I've spent, you know, my entire career running and starting businesses. So, um, I have been around the, in this rodeo a little bit, but I know other people that are way smarter than I am, that, um, we can possibly ta, tap into.
Yeah. Uh, Jerry, did you have something for Bennett?
So, um, or do, do the businesses that are opening up in our industrial park, they're, they're considered foundational businesses, aren't they?
Yeah, I would, I would call all of them foundational businesses.
Okay.
So, and, and just, um, so I know some of the realtors that have worked on some of those projects in the past. And I think that the, the observation from them is a mixed bag as to whether or not Estacada is easy to work with.
So, um, I just want to, you know, I, I appreciate your statement and everything. I just want to point out that the majority of those businesses in that industrial complex were, um, started, built, and, um, done during this mayor's tenure and during part of this council's tenure. So, um, to say that we're not putting, um, you know, putting, giving attention to foundational businesses, I, I, I disagree. But, um, these auxiliary businesses definitely need attention also. Um, I just, uh, I, but I do appreciate, I do appreciate what you're saying.
So can I address that?
Uh, go ahead.
I, I didn't say that you didn't put energy into foundational businesses. What I think is it's a waste of time to put energy into auxiliary businesses. And I know that, um, the reason I'm here presenting to you today, and I haven't been presenting the same rhetoric to, uh, previous city councils or previous mayors, is because I think you guys have a chance of actually doing a really good job on this. And so I want to put this stuff in front of you so to kind of spur this kind of discussion. And if you disagree with me, uh, you know, that's fine. But at least this kind of discussion should happen. Um, because again, you're the leaders, you're the ones leading the pack here. And so you should, in my opinion, be creating plans that address, addresses where the city wants to go with economic development and everything else in front of you.
All right, we thank you Bennett. Is there any more questions for Bennett before I allow her to, to go off the panel? Bennett, we thank you for your input. I'm glad you came back in to answer the questions. I appreciate you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, uh, is there's nobody else in the queue? We will, uh, move to the consent agenda. Uh, all of you've had a chance to read over the consent agenda. If there's any questions before we pass a motion, now is the time to ask those or switch something. I'm not sure which, uh, Joel, go ahead.
Just, I noticed, uh, something in the, uh, minutes. Um, I just wanted to see if we could have corrected. In the, under the said signage on public property, there were some suggestions that were made in the previous meeting. And I noticed those, none of those were mentioned at all in the minutes. Could we have the staff go back, uh, review those from the meeting video? Pull those suggestions and put them in the minutes, please? Because I think they're good, they're good suggestions, and we need to make sure those are recorded so we can look back on them later.
Okay, I'm not sure, uh, maybe you can help me understand which, uh.
Uh, there were suggestions as far as possible locations, ways and how to, to put the signage out beyond a simple. Um, I think it is simply mentioned in there about, uh, about having a reader board, and that's about it. But there's a few other locations and ways to do it that are made from a couple of different counselors, and I'd like to have those put in there as well.
Okay, all right, is that something we can do? Sadie and Denise?
Yeah, we, we usually do, uh, we usually don't do detailed minutes. We do more, uh, motion approved minutes is what we've done in the past. So we certainly can get those ideas out, and, um, I would recommend we send them out to the council, but I don't know if we should correct our minutes to include all those.
Okay, all right.
I just think they add some good value to them, so having them written in the minutes somewhere where they're recorded is a good idea, I think. But that's, that's my opinion, so.
Well, we appreciate that. We try to be as accurate as possible. But in this case, I think we might, but in future, maybe, uh, including such things. But maybe now we can just have it passed out to each counselor so that we understand those, those ideas were in there. Is that possible? Uh, Sadie, that's the thing we do, okay?
And, and the meeting video is on our website too as well, if anybody wanted to refer to that, but yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, so as counselors, I think we should put that out. If anybody asks to see anything that they might have missed, let them know that it's pre-recorded. They can always look it up, see into it. But in the future, we'll try to be more detailed. We appreciate you, Joel, for that, that input. So thank you. All right, uh, is there anything else before we pass a motion on the consent agenda? No? Okay, can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, but first and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I think it passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we are at a department and committee reports. So do any of you have any reports? I know you don't have groups, but please feel free to, to give us a list. Okay, Jerry, go ahead.
Um, so I met with, uh, I met with the Arts Commission, uh, we had our meeting on Wednesday. There are some pretty, um, there's a lot of thinking outside the box, and, uh, with that group, uh, that's typical thinking from them. But, uh, you know, for any of the rest of us, it's definitely thinking outside the box. So the plan is to have some sort of summer celebration. We're not sure, they're not sure exactly what it's going to entail yet, but there's some really good ideas going out, um, that are being floated around. There's a survey that's going to go out, um, that, uh, you know, just with, with some ideas. But, um, it's pretty exciting to know that there's going to be some sort of summer celebration. You know, what it looks like, we, the, we just don't know yet. And then the, uh, um, the Arts Commission met with Eric Underwood from PGE, um, following our meeting with PGE. Uh, Eric was, Eric was great, uh, keeping in touch with me. I got him in touch with, uh, the chairman of the Arts Commission, Gene Hebert Larson. And, uh, there's continued communication going on about doing the wraps on the PG boxes in downtown. Sounds like, uh, the Reliance Box is going to be the initial box done. Um, and then PG is going, they're basically going to use that as a, a demo for, um, to show PGE and, um, get them more, and more involved and bought into the project. But, uh, it sounds like all of that is definitely moving forward at a faster rate than it was before. And I'm very thankful for PG coming to that meeting and, uh, giving me the opportunity to ask that question and get that ball rolling, so. But, um, no, Arts Commission is doing some pretty amazing things and working on some pretty good stuff, so, um, that's all I got.
Good, thank you Jerry. Anybody else wish to speak on that? Joel, you've got something?
I, I just got more of a question for city staff. I, I'm supposed to be the liaison to the planning commission, but I can't find when their next meeting is, and I'm hoping they can fill me in on that.
Yeah, I sent, I sent your information to Tracy, who's the secretary for the planning commission. So she'll be sure to include you when packets go out.
Perfect.
When meetings are.
Thank you, I saw that.
All right, thank you, Joe. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Katie?
I was just going to say that I popped on to the C4 committee meeting on Thursday, but, uh, as the alternate, I, uh, I didn't stick around because you were on it. So I just wanted to say that I was at the C4, but I didn't stick around because you were there. So I was just kind of curious as to what happened at C4.
Well, mostly the conversation in C4 was held for tolling. As you know, they're still battling back and forth whether tolling is a good idea or a bad idea. Uh, they're putting out a lot of studies, they're still in that deciding zone. They've got a little while to work here before that really becomes apparent that the funding has to come in for what was used to build what they're building right now. So that was the main part of the conversation. Uh, other than that, the C4 was pretty limited. I mean, there was, it was the first one of the year, there were introductions. There's quite a few new mayors on, uh, on government right now. I didn't know, I barely recognized anybody, so, uh, that was kind of different. Um, I, you know, I've been in there for a while now. When you see them start to turn over, you're like, oh wow. But, uh, no, it, the, the C4 was mainly on tolling. That was the main concern. There wasn't a lot of time with introductions and everything that were going on that night. It's the first one of the year. So from here out, it'll get very interesting.
Out, out of curiosity, I, I know that the legislators are meeting right now in Salem. Um, are there any, uh, talks of any joint letters that they would like the city to, to support? Uh, you know, like an open letter to send to the Congress or to the legislators down in Salem while they're meeting? Do you know if there's any plans to do any of that?
Sure, there is. In fact, I've been asked to give, uh, a testimony, uh, for the bills that involve the fire and all the things that would relate to us in that aspect. Uh, so I'll be giving testimony on that. Uh, other than that, there's quite a few bills out there. If you don't know those bills, go onto the League of Oregon City's website, and they have the list, and it will give you a description of each bill and its, and its need or dislike or like. And you can kind of make a educated decision on which of those bills you want to support. But the more you support those, the more you go out and speak on these, the better chance they have of making it. As Katie said, writing a letter is always good in support of any of those. It gives them more on the floor. So, um, yes, thank you for that question, Katie. That was, that was great.
You're drinking.
Yeah, anything else? Uh, Joel, go ahead.
Um, this is not necessarily a specific committee, but it is kind of along the lines of there. So I'm hoping this is the right place to bring it up. But, uh, there's a, something sent out to us, uh, from, uh, the Oregon House Wildfire Recovery Committee. And I was wondering, uh, if we're going to have some people from here are going to, which counselors might be, uh, attending next? I know I plan to, but, um, see what kind of resources we can get for the city on that.
Yeah. So I think, uh, the more the merrier, as many of the we can get out there to show support, because we are an area that not directly affected, but in our surrounding area, there are quite a bit, uh, of things that are coming down the pike that we can benefit from if we jump on board. In fact, I just talked to Matt the other day. Um, we, he was wonderful. He put together a proposal for some of that wildfire money that's coming down the pike that Christine Drazen is fighting for, and I'm hoping we see a little bit of that. But the more we get out there, the more we make ourselves known, the more we have an opportunity to benefit from a lot of this that's going on. So please do what you can out there and read about it, because there's a lot of stuff out there right now. We don't want to miss the boat.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry.
Katie, go ahead.
Um, well, are you guys done discussing that? Because I was going to just jump on a kind of a different subject really quickly while we're talking about commissions and liaisons.
Can I just pop them in there real quick before?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that the public also knew that there is a, there is a virtual meeting for the public on that as well. And it looks like it's on February fifteenth from five thirty to eight thirty. Um, is this something that we can maybe, uh, post more information for the, for our public to jump on that to? Uh, Denise, maybe on the city website or something?
Yeah, just send me what you're looking at and we can get that on there.
Okay, I'll forward it to you, so.
Okay, great. Okay, Katie, gonna hit us with that and see if we can.
Yeah, so, um, actually, this, uh, relates to a conversation that we had during our, uh, retreat earlier this year when we were talking about, you know, commissions and committees and liaisons and things like that. Uh, Joel had brought up the idea of basically establishing some sort of a committee where we can connect nonprofit groups that are in our city and providing social services. Um, I ended up actually learning last week about a really amazing group of people in Estacada called Estacada Connect. It appears that they've been around for a number of years. Uh, there's just not a lot of, uh, stuff publicized about them, but they are a group of people that meet, it sounds like quarterly or every other month. Um, and they, they meet via Zoom right now, but outside of a pandemic, it sounds like they're in-person meetings. And they really just talk about the, the work that they're doing in our city, um, how they can connect to each other's resources. Maybe they're working with a family that, you know, you can help with the food bank over here, and I can help with the emergency shelter over here. Um, it's a really great group of people that I was really, really honored to be able to, um, join in on their Zoom call on Thursday. That being said, they're not a, a city-sponsored committee or, you know, anything in our, our city charter. Um, but I think that they could be a really valuable group of people for us to listen to and to get to know better and to learn from. And in that spirit, I was going to ask the council whether or not, um, they would permit me to be a pseudo liaison to this amazing group of people and to be able to bring some of the information that I learned during these Estacada Connect meetings um, back to the council to share the amazing work that they're doing in our city with all of you people. I was wondering how we all felt about that. And maybe if, uh, they wanted to, if, if we as a city wanted to have a liaison, but, um, but maybe not me. And that's totally fine too, but I wanted to throw that out there because I just learned about this amazing group of people that I'd really like to be able to, um, bring closer to, to us as a city, um, you know, and, and really make that connection and that relationship stronger. I wanted to just throw it out there.
Okay, great, I like that. Um, Denise, what do you think? Is this something that we can do? Um, if it's not city, um, under the city's umbrella, I mean, is this?
Yeah, I think, uh, Melanie's on the committee, so. Yeah, I think we can go ahead and I'll, I'll let them know, um, that you want to join in, Katie.
Okay.
If the council feels cool with that.
Uh, Joel, did you have something to say about?
Uh, so yeah, um, I actually know about Estacada Connect. We actually started working with them, uh, through our, my nonprofit outside the council. Um, and it's a really good group, and so I, I think it's, uh, good for the city to have a connection with them. Um, so, and I, I've worked with them in the past, so yeah. I just wanted to kind of reiterate that I know exactly what Katie's talking about. I know the group. And I think it would be really beneficial for the, uh, for the city to have some, uh, connection with them, because they, they do, they do a lot, and, um, they, they try to pull in the other nonprofits into it as well. So it might be a good central point to, uh, kind of, I guess liaison to liaisons or something, however you want to put that in there, so.
All right, great, thank you. Um, uh, is everybody fine with that then? Katie can go on to be, do that? Would that be? Okay, all right, great, Katie. Head out, do your work, make it happen. All right, thank you. Uh, is there any more before we move on? No? Okay. So city managers report, it's all you Denise.
Yeah, um, so, uh, we have, uh, the Sixth and Main Street project going. That should be going, wrapped up in another couple of weeks. Um, we're still working on Wade Creek Park Phase Three on getting the bid out for that, and that will come to the council in, um, I think in April for selection. Um, Matt has, uh, presented a, um, a board at the state for some monies for the dock. So we're waiting on word from that. And, uh, that, that's about it that's going on for the, the big stuff. Uh, Sadie's been working on budget, and so we're working on that. And I did send that, the mayor, uh, the letter out that the mayor had to send to, um, Representative Drawson to all the council. I hope you all saw that. Um, we did hear back from her staff, um, today, and they had some revisions for the letter that they want us to, to make it a little bit stronger. So we'll be doing that, so.
Great, great, that's encouraging, that's encouraging. All right, and that's all you have tonight, then? That's, that's good, that's good.
I'm trying to babysit a two-year-old right beside me at the same.
Oh, that's fun.
I've been up and down.
Jerry, you got something?
Uh, yeah, so, um, last, uh, I think, I believe it was the last meeting, uh, Counselor Licky had, uh, brought up reopening City Hall. My question, I thought about this a lot, and I guess my question is, um, is, has, have we talked to city, I mean, have you talked to your staff Denise about whether this is even something that they feel comfortable doing? Because, I mean, as far as I know, this is, that's still outside of the governor's mandate. And I don't want to do anything, I don't want to push anybody towards anything that, uh, you know, as long as the work is still getting done, we're still having our meetings. And I think we've had a, we've had much better attendance on these Zoom meetings than we, you know, at least as long as I've been a counselor than we ever had, um, in, in City Hall. So, um, you know, I just, uh, like I said, I just want to, wanted to see how staff felt about that and, uh, you know, whether we really need to put energy into that right now, or just let that, uh, you know, just, uh, move on from that idea for a little bit.
So no, while we're in extreme risk, we aren't having, uh, we aren't even having discussions about opening City Hall. We do have staff taking turns being there every day now, so Monday through Thursday, we have staff there. Um, we did send out the survey. We have gotten back about thirty. We have about eleven that, um, people that, you know.
Oh, you're off.
Oops. Okay.
Yeah.
About eleven that feels like it's hard to get information. And, um, the, most of them didn't put their name though, so. But the ones that did put their name, we are contacting and talking to them about some suggestions. So, um, that's where we are on that. So yeah, and staff isn't comfortable on coming back yet, and they will be once we, you know, get the, the counts go down and, and, uh, that, so.
All right, great.
But we are working on being ready for when it does open up, so.
Well, there's, there's encouragement on the horizon. I just sat in to the government's meeting, uh, with Governor Brown today. Um, and she gave pretty much an outline. Uh, she's not willing to free it up in the extreme category yet. Um, but it's looking good. We're the fourth lowest rate in the nation. So that is pretty good numbers if you think about it. Uh, we're the lowest death rate from what I understand. Uh, we have the lowest overall rate per county. Um, so that's encouraging, that's encouraging. But she wants to be safe, so we're going to hold the, the extreme for a little bit longer. Uh, Katie, did you have some?
I, I just want to clarify, I'm sorry Denise. Um, did you say that of, of the, we had thirty people respond, and eleven of them have expressed that it's difficult to receive information? So we've had, okay, so we had more than one-third of the respondents express frustration with the closure.
Um, yeah, and it was, they were, it was all positive except for it said for general information. They feel like it's hard to get general information. So we're working on that. And plus with the people back now every day, there'll be a real person answering the phone. So we think. So we think that will help that that a lot. But like as far as paying bills and stuff, that was all positive, paying bills, doing business like that, building permits, there was no negative. Um, it was just general information that they were concerned about.
Okay, but we do have, but we're taking steps. And so now we, so and we did not have someone at City Hall Monday through Thursday before.
Right, the.
That's a new step.
Right, only two days a week, at least consistently. There was probably someone there because anytime we make an appointment, but now there's gonna be someone there. Yep.
Okay, I'm glad we're taking steps. Thank you.
Yeah. Joel, you have something?
Definitely, I'm glad we're taking steps, but uh just wanted to clarify. So we have somebody in the building for like answering phones and stuff, but that doesn't mean that the public can come down, knock on the door and interact with anybody or wha- can you clarify what that is?
Um, they can by appointment. So when they get to the door, there's a sign that says if you need something, here's the number to call. And if they need something that needs to be done out onsite, we set up an appointment with them.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the people that are watching so that can be expressed.
Okay, great. Are there any more questions for Denise? No? All right, we're gonna move along now. Uh, we are now at council business. Um, we have the first thing on the list is chat appointments. So I'm not sure who would take that one. Uh, Matt?
So uh, thank you. Chad is the Community on Housing Affordability and Diversity. Um, you've seen this exact staff report in the past. We're bringing it back um due to the discussion that was had at your goal-setting meeting uh a week or two ago in in which the council expressed sort of unanimous consensus to go ahead and move forward. The one caveat being that you were all interested in knowing who the delegates might be from uh the county housing authority as well as the school district. Um as I'm sure you're all abundantly aware, the school district's very busy right now and I haven't heard back from Ryan Carpenter just yet, so I don't know who their delegate will be. I can't answer that question, but for Jill Smith, she did respond and indicated that she would be uh if she would like to attend all of them herself and said she would do everything she could to do that. Uh, in the event she couldn't make it, she designated someone on her team named Joe Venice, V E N N E S. And uh, if you Google him, uh, you'll you'll get a few um a few hits and one of them kinda details his professional background, about twenty-eight years in the uh realm of subsidized student and affordable housing. Um, so it sounds like a pretty knowledgeable person, but that's who she would designate. We don't have a designee from the school district just yet.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for that due diligence and finding those answers for us. We appreciate that. Um, any questions for Matt about Chad? And are we are we looking for just to go ahead with what we have right now as far as what you've come together with? Um, all the appointments?
Maybe Sadie can coach us a little bit here. I'm not sure the normal protocol for doing appointments to committees.
Um, Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't read your staff report, but did you make a recommendation for uh you listed out everybody's name, so somebody could make a motion to um approve those appointments.
Okay.
And that would be great.
Okay.
To approve the member roster as proposed by city staff.
I second.
Joel? Before we get out of that, I just wanted to ask a question. Could could we appoint everybody but uh Ryan Carpenter until he's passed off the uh the who the delegate is? I just want to know who's going in before I vote for them, that's all. And we can be pointing everybody else, the other eight and.
Let him know that he has to be the person there since he didn't get back to us on that. And then we can bring it to a future meeting if he comes up with a person.
Okay, that works.
Fair enough. I've got a first and a second, so I imagine we're gonna vote on that. Is everybody comfortable with the the that now? So it's done deal? Okay. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, it moves along. Thank you, Matt, for your assistance. Okay, next on the list, I have Vertical Housing Development Zone Establishment. That's also you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you. I I was just commenting to Denise earlier today. I felt like I wasn't in front of the council very much in twenty twenty and now here I am tonight with uh three different matters in front of the council. So so it goes, I guess, when it rains, it pours. Um so we discussed this a little bit at the planning retreat. We touched on it a little bit as a tangent in the last meeting. Um, but the proposal here is to form consensus among the city council and to direct staff to go ahead and move forward with the establishment of the Vertical Housing Development Zone. Um, a vote will be required in order to officially enact it, but we won't do that until a resolution is drafted and that's what you would be voting to adopt is the enacting resolution. What happens between now and the time that you pass that revol- res- resolution um is that we have to notice all of the affected taxing districts. I've listed those in your staff report um under discussion. It's the second subheading. It says taxing districts. So we send a letter to them describing what this is, how it affects them, what the boundaries are. Um, and um and then give them the opportunity and instructions if they so choose to opt out. So not all of these taxing districts have to participate. They can opt out. Um that would, I believe, and I need to verify this, I believe that would incrementally affect the incentive, the the actual amount of the tax credit that we would offer someone who's eligible for and who applies for this tax credit because that one agency is saying, no, we want our tax money. You don't get it. Um, so I just need to verify that, but at any rate, that's the basics, that they'll get a letter, it describes the program, it just describes the impact and gives them the opportunity to opt out. Um once they have had that opportunity and it's been at least oh, where did I put it in the report? I want to say it's sixty days from the time that that notice is mailed to them. As long as we haven't heard from them within sixty days saying, no, we don't want to participate, then we have the green light by statute to go ahead and pass the resolution. And once that resolution is in place, then our zone is designated and then it's just between us, our office and the county assessor's office to process that tax exemption for the abatement period.
Yeah.
So, um yeah, if there are questions, uh, let's have them. I don't believe that this really impacts any single taxing district, including including the city in any sort of significant way. I gave an example under budget impact. Um, if you had a chance to peek at that. Um but the total amount of savings spread out across a ten-year period can be significant for the applicant, the recipient of the tax credit. But because the cost burden is spread out across so many different taxing agencies, the impact on any single agency is really quite negligible. The caveat would be if someone was going to take advantage of this program and build a ton of apartments.
Hey, Paul.
Joel, what's that?
Uh, Paul, I have a question for you.
Oh, yeah.
I I guess it'd be just going along this line, Matt, of what you're saying here. So the 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 taxing districts, they wouldn't be out any money of what would be what they would currently be receiving now, correct? This is just future buildings that are pretty much for the most part unplanned at this point as well too, that they would miss out on a a percentage of the taxes for a certain amount of time. Percentage of future unknown taxes for a certain amount of time. So they're not gonna be having anything reduced from what they're currently receiving.
That's correct. Well, not not unless someone participates in the program. So for example, if the heritage properties, um uh, if if Heath applies for the vertical housing tax credit, that would be the first, the first one.
Yeah, but uh cemetery district, for example, is already getting whatever amount from that property now, um which is probably pretty minor uh amount and all they would be out of is twenty percent of whatever increased value that that property.
That's correct. So on a net basis, they're still gonna come out on top when when new development occurs. It's just that they're gonna get a little less.
Okay, yep, just clarifying that. Thanks.
And that and that we'll try and I'm I'm glad you mentioned that because that's an important thing to spell out in the letter as well. It's not just, hey, you're foregoing um revenue. It's you're still gonna get an increased amount of revenue. It's just gonna be a notch less because of this credit.
Okay, um Katie, you had your end up?
Um, so two questions really quick. Can we as a city uh automatically opt out uh for any of the special districts? Like if if I said, you know, I like the idea of doing this, but I don't think that the Estacada School District should be included. I think we should just automatically opt them out. Would that be something that we could do or would that be something that they would still have to go through and and take the steps?
I would have to check with the um fellow at the state office and get an answer to that. I don't know.
Okay, my last one.
In in a worst case scenario, we could contact their finance department and say, hey, we're sending you a letter and we need you to reply to it and says and say that you don't want to participate.
Okay. Uh, my last one was you talked about like uh the the potential budget impact that it could be if someone were to build a bunch of apartment con- or a bunch of apartments, right? Um, so it what I what I see on your staff report is if the Vertical Housing Development Zone were to be established in the future in other parts of the city where there are uh those pieces of land that that could be taken advantage of, if we were to go with the V H D Z, could we just not designate the those areas that we're concerned about someone taking advantage of this program? Could we just not include those in the 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 V H D Z?
Yes, so the zone boundaries can be whatever we want them to be. Um, I'm I'm proposing here that the first zone that we establish be aligned with the downtown zone boundaries simply because we already have that legal description. We're not gonna have to pay and wait for a surveyor to come and generate that legal description. It also just makes sense because the type of development, mixed-use development that Vertical Housing is trying to establish is what our downtown code is written for. So it just makes lots of sense. If we were to look at other zones in the city where we wanted to have a Vertical Housing Development Zone, we might want to be a little bit more nuanced about how those boundaries touch certain parcels.
I was just curious because I know that like the mix, the the mill area mixed-use zone that we just created the beginning of last year, I know that a lot of us had talked about that being a a prime example of where uh the that mixed-use development would make really good sense, where you've got the commercial on the bottom and the apartments on the top. But there's also a lot of land over there that someone could potentially develop a very, very large community, you know, uh even under these parameters. And I just, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily want to see this program being taken advantage of. But at the same time, uh it it, I mean, it, I I like the idea of keeping it downtown, at least for the first couple of years and seeing how successful this program is. And then in the future, if you wanted to expand uh the Vertical Housing Designated Zone, uh, do it in the future, but keeping it to downtown, I think is a really great idea at first.
I think it's a good way to cut our teeth with the program as well.
Yeah, yeah. Joel, you have something?
A couple of questions and things on here. Uh, one is are would we be able to even possibly consider putting a cap on how many units we would we would allow this the this to you go up to so that we don't have to worry about someone brings a large complex in and taking advantage of it? We can say up to X many, you know, units or doors or whatever will will be allowed to and for the for the cap on there? Or is that is that something we can do?
It it is. Um, that when the state turned this program back to the municipalities, they allowed us pretty broad abilities to set additional program guidelines that are tailored to our community. So I don't know that we could restrict number of, well, I guess we could. We could restrict number of units, but uh a simpler way to do it that would align better with how the program functions would be to maybe limit the number of stories that could be abated.
Okay, um, I think the key thing is we can put limitations on it though, so that way we don't have to worry about large complexes taking massive advantage of it where we can still, and that would allow more of a general use or applying it to certain more zones without having to go cherry pick each zone. We just put a cap on it so we know that we're not gonna have to worry about that. Um, is that, am I looking at that kinda correctly?
Yeah, I I think the the bottom line is that we have pretty broad ability to set rules as we see fit in Estacada.
All right, um, second question I have um is uh has Sandy or Malala or any of our other other sister cities um in the area uh put something, I guess, in place that we can look? I know, so you there's some larger cities mentioned here um in the in the paperwork we got, but um is there smaller cities that are more closer to our size that we can look at? Well, maybe what they probably implemented for themselves or?
Um, I'm not aware that Sandy or Malala has a Vertical Housing Development Zone, so we would be on the vanguard.
Okay.
I I'm so sorry, I just wanted to throw in there. I think Candy does.
Candy does?
I think Candy does. You're probably right.
Is that the closest sized city to us that's out there that you think has it? I'd be kinda curious to what what they looked at. Um, last question, real quick side one is what does C C C as far as the has Vertical Housing Tax Credit?
Um.
It says C C C on the as far as the, I mean, uh, the district, sorry, as far as the district.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I should have spelled that out. Clackamas Community College.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I had.
All right, Paul, you had something?
Yeah, I was just gonna touch base on putting a cap on that. Wouldn't wouldn't that be almost a dream come true to have some developer come in and put, you know, a a ton of apartments in land that's ready for it? I mean, that's isn't isn't that what we would want? Is something like that as opposed to trying to cap that out?
Yeah, so if we look started looking at a new zone in the future, we would probably need to run some hypothetical numbers and see if a cap was something you wanted to explore or if you did feel like a cap was counterproductive. I I don't know what the answer would be, but we'd probably want to take a close look at it.
All right. Katie, go ahead.
I just want to throw out, um, councillor Strobel, I don't think that the idea of a cap is to necessarily say we can't have developments larger than this size. I think the purpose of the cap is that we want to make sure that the that that this incentive or that this assistance is going to projects that are not necessarily taking advantage of the tax break. Um, if someone is willing and able to come in and build a hundred apartments, um, then why would we give them tax breaks for one hundred apartments if they really only needed the tax break for twenty? If that makes any sense. I I see the value in at least adding a cap for the the benefit of the incentive, but I don't think anyone's talking about a cap on how many apartments to be built.
Sure, I'm 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 good with that. And I think uh as well too, let's let's uh see how the downtown one goes first and if it starts pulling in folks then and we want to expand that, we can definitely talk about whatever limitations we need to put on at that point.
A good point.
Yeah, due to development site restraints, you're probably not gonna see any large-scale development downtown anyhow. Um, so.
And I just asked that we be very transparent putting this out. That's my biggest thing, that we get it out to everybody and anybody who's going to be in that. So we never get the question is we never, you never told us, you know? I want to make sure this is out there and very apparent. Uh, Paul, you have something else?
Yeah, I want a different one here. Had a question on on uh how this works on that. I think it's page two of four in the discussion portion. It talks about the uh twenty percent partial property tax exemption, but then right below it, it says, in addition, the value of the land can be partially exempted if low-income affordable housing units are provided as part of the project scope. Uh, and it goes into twenty percent, eighty percent. Is this, is this the same thing? Is this on top of? I was just curious how they work together or if if they are the same thing.
Um, yeah, good question. I'm still learning the ins and outs of this um myself, but my understanding is that whereas the land is still taxed at one hundred percent during an a normal abatement through the Vertical Housing Program, if you, if your project has affordable housing and low-income units, then uh and that meets certain criteria, the land can also receive the twenty percent exemption. And so the reason why it says no more than eighty percent of the assessed land value is eligible is because like, let's say they built five stories. You couldn't get to one hundred percent exemption, you'd only get to eighty percent. That's my understanding.
Okay.
I hope that made sense.
Yeah. Charity, did you have something?
Um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this whole thing correctly. So with um doing this uh Vertical Housing Tax Credit, we are primarily looking at this program because of the project that we were discussing earlier, correct? That this was. project that we were discussing earlier, correct, that this was that that um that was going to get Heath's stall cup that amount of money that he's going to need to proceed with this project. Am I, am I wrong? Katie, shake.
You know, that that was an immediate driver that really accelerated this, but if I'm being completely honest, Denise asked me probably over a year ago to start looking into the vertical housing tax credit.
Okay.
And you know, there's just things that come up and I just didn't get to it, but and then we had this situation and all of a sudden it was like, well, we need that now, so.
Okay, okay, um, I guess my only concern and you know, is when we're on the subject of caps and things like that, um. Just because we were dealing with the the water sewer treatment plant and things of that nature. And I know we're talking about an immediate thing, but I'm looking down the road too, um, just for infrastructure and just making sure that we have the infrastructure to support um, uh, more people coming into the area, so um, that's, you know, those are my two cents, but yeah, if anybody has any other clarification on that, um, vertical housing, that I'm missing something, feel free.
All right, thank you.
The infrastructure comment in question is a good one. With any large scale development, um, engineering is going to be taking a look at that to make sure that infrastructure can support it. And if it can't, then the burden is on the developer then to make improvements that can support the development. Um, but yeah, that's that's a fair point. I mean, we're all talking right now hypothetically about large, large amounts of apartments. It is good to look to the future, but right now there's, I don't know of any concern about it.
Okay, Joel, you had something else you wanted to add?
Uh, yeah, so uh I want to circle back around, um. I just, I I got this nagging feeling in the back of my head that there might be a reason why smaller cities haven't adopted this in the past. And I just want to make sure that there was, there isn't something that we're missing and in, you know, that could uh potentially we need to put into this, this, how we design this. Or if there's something that's that maybe someone has uh exploited in the past on there and damaged to the city budget or something, I don't, I don't know, just I I'm seeing a bunch of cities here, they're pretty large, but nothing but small cities. And I just have a concern about that. I want to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure there's not something that we're missing. Uh, that that's my big, my big thing uh with that one. And then there's a line in here I want to ask you about real quick. It says, the city must consider the potential for displacement of households within the proposed V H D Z before designating the zone. What does that mean?
Yeah, I had the same question and uh tried to do as much research as possible there and what I discovered is that there's there's not really any clear direction from from anyone on that matter. And so what that means is that we kind of define what it means to consider the displacement of households. So I think what they're, when when the statute was written, the intent there is that, um. Like, let's say there was a a part of town that was mainly com- like, single family residential of homes that were kind of neglected and maybe de facto low income housing. If you establish a vertical housing zone in an area like I just described, there's a high potential that someone is going to come by those poorly maintained homes, knock down four of them and 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 displace those people and build a bunch of apartments. So those are the type of scenarios that we're trying to watch out for. I don't, because we don't have many people living downtown, I don't know that it's rises to the level of concern that we would need to be thinking about. The largest area of residential density uh downtown is probably the uh at between third and fourth on Main. Um, that development site would potentially be an area where folks could be displaced by uh mixed use development. So I guess we would just need to demonstrate that that we've thought that through and that if if there were a development proposed there that the city would do X, Y, or Z to try and mitigate some of those displacing uh factors, I guess I'm kind of rambling now, but those are the type of considerations they're talking about.
Good, Katie.
Uh, I just wanted to provide some of the background for what Counselor Licky was asking about for why there are larger cities um passing the the vertical districts um more so than smaller cities. The vertical tax or the the vertical uh housing tax credit was really developed by larger cities because what they were experiencing was a lack of available land for them to develop that was vacant. And what they wanted to do was, um, it's called upzoning or or building up. They wanted to encourage people to build up instead of out because they were running out of places for people to build out. Um, that being said, in Estacada, we do have some land that is available for uh for multifamily development. The reason I think that it would be really beneficial to Estacada, though, is because if we are able to designate our downtown area, which has historically been uh retail on the top and and residential on, or I'm sorry, commercial on the bottom and re- and residential on the top. I mean, if you go down Broadway and you look at the buildings, that's the history of our town. That being said, if we can bring some of that back to our downtown area and really encourage people to build up, it then we'll experience less of that urban sprawl. So the more we encourage people to build up, the less they build out. So it's one of those things where if we want to incentivize building up, this is a really good, easy way for us to incentivize that. If we want people to build out, there's been, we we're exploring ways for us to incentivize that development as well. I think this is a really good, easy way for us to incentivize upward development, especially in our downtown area, especially areas that have historically been uh commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. And this is just one really easy way to encourage that development. Whatever you put in place, though, for incentives or encouragement is not going to then equal development. It does take someone on the other end to go, oh, you know what? That sounds like a really great deal. Let's go ahead and do that. So just because we say, hey, we want to incentivize these areas to build up, does not necessarily mean that we're, we should expect that upward development to happen immediately. But that's where, that's why the the vertical tax credit exists, that's the history behind it, and that's why you're more likely to see it in larger cities than you are in smaller.
Okay. Well, are there any more questions on vertical housing or can we kind of step it up a little bit? We've got a lot of stuff on here we got to finish before we get out of here. So uh, any more questions that we want to put out about that or can we move it along? Okay, Matt, so what do you need from us from here out? You need a a consensus? Do you need a a vote?
Um, consensus is fine. I guess it would just be good to know if anyone has strong feelings that thinks we should not be moving forward with this. And if there are none, no opposing opinions, then we'll start um drafting the notice letters and working on the resolution.
Okay, uh, do we have a consensus? This is something that you want to move forward on? Everybody's good? Okay, you've got it, Matt, so go ahead and do diligence. So thank you. Next on the list, I have ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero zero one, an ordinance adding section nine point one two point zero six zero indecent exposure to the Estacada Municipal Code. You've all had a chance to read this over. Uh, is there anything you uh have an issue with in this or something you want to bring up right now? Now's the time to do it.
It's basically the the Portland code with a little bit of extra wordage to fit into our code, so.
Okay, and I think, Joel, you brought this to the table. Is this kind of what you were looking at?
This looks exactly like what I was looking at. It, I think it meets me, meets my original intent, so.
Okay, great.
Good, good job, Steph. I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a vote from us tonight? Is that what you're looking for? Okay, I'm asking for a vote on this ordinance. Can somebody put that together?
Uh, I make a motion to uh enact ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero one ordinance adding section nine point one two zero six zero indecent exposure to the Estacada Municipal Code.
Okay, I have a first and second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, next on the list, I have Acuity LLC audit contract that we've had. Denise, you can kind of give them in a little fill in there on that.
So um, we went with Acuity, um, six years they've been doing it now. Um, with, we are very um happy with them. They have, it's probably taken these first, it took the first three years to straighten out some of the stuff the old auditor had done incorrectly. And so these three years have been pretty good, so um, we're asking for the three year extension. And then with the next time you go out, um, we'll be going out for um for uh bids on the next time because you kind of don't want to stay, you know, real long with one auditor unless they come in the the low bid again, but their um, their prices, uh, when we did them, uh, when we renewed them three years ago, they didn't raise their price at all. So they were the low bidder when we were there, you know, six years ago. And this year they have, they um put the city one up a thousand dollars and they didn't increase urban renewal, so. Um, we want to go ahead and stick with them these three years and then when that time is up, we'll go out for bid again and get some different competitive bids and see, see if they're still the lowest.
All right, great. And what you're looking from us tonight is a consensus to stick with what we have here. You don't need a vote or anything on this.
Um, no, I I don't think so, but Katie, Katie has a question.
Yeah.
I was curious, um, so we've had Acuity for six years. When in that six years, uh, it or if they ever have, has anyone audited our franchise agreements or the contracts, the the franchise contracts that we have out there in the city?
Well, they audit the funding for it, but they don't audit the actual agreement. That's not what they they do, so we haven't had them. We haven't had a separate audit of the of the franchisees.
Okay, um, is that something that we should have done every so often just to make sure that the that those with franchise agreements with the city are paying the city exactly what the franchise agreement says that they should be?
Yeah, um, let me check in because I know there were some cities that have recently done that. I don't think it would be during the same process that this auditor does, and I'm not even sure if this auditor does that type of audit. But let me check in to see what uh who other cities have used and what that procedure was and how much that cost. I think that would be a separate contract.
I I just want to make sure that, you know, when we're, when we go with an auditor, that they are auditing everything and even if it's a separate thing, I'd like to, I I like the idea of actually what you were saying, it's not a really good idea to stay with the same auditor for, you know, a period of time.
Yeah.
I actually think six years is kind of a long period of time and I'm, I'm, I'm actually kind of wondering it, why, why are you already planning on doing it in three years? But you aren't, but you wouldn't consider looking into a different auditor today? Nope, you're on mute again, Denise.
I thought I was taking it off. Um, we could look, but they usually start their audit in March, so we technically probably should have got to that sooner. But um, I'm, I think they could do that kind of audit, but it would be above and beyond the twelve thousand five hundred, you know, if they were to audit. But I don't know, I really need to talk to them and see, and I also would like to talk to other cities because I've heard of a couple of them doing that recently. And I don't know if there's experts at that, you know, at that or not, but I will look into that and and get that information back to you guys. Because I do think that would be a good idea because it's certainly something that we don't get enough information. But all of our franchises say we can request the information to do an audit, but I'd have to look at that, so.
Um, so uh, so I know that today you're asking to renew a contract for for three years. Is it possible to renew a contract for less than three years or is this bid very dependent on the three year mark?
Sadie, I, you deal with them more, Sadie, do you know?
You know, they didn't talk to me in person about it. They just sent the contract and we, I think they throw in the three years because that's what we've been renewing, um.
So maybe we can ask them to do a year and then we'll put it out for bid.
Yeah, see if they would be willing to give us that price for just one year instead of three.
Okay.
And we can certainly bring this back to you. It doesn't have to be tonight.
Okay, great. Joel, you had a question?
Um, yeah, uh, just just actually a couple of questions. First one, um, whenever we do any sort of contracts or things like that, aren't we supposed to have three bids on it no matter what? Even if it's a renewal, that we should have three bids on it? Isn't that like a requirement for government?
Oh, there are things in your contract that say it's renewable.
Renewable, okay, so that not all contracts have to have a three bid on it every time. Gotcha. All right, so. Um, yeah, and I I'm right there with uh with Katie on it's, it's a, it's a new year. It's a good, it's after a kind of hard year, it's a good time to get some fresh starts and I think six years is a long time for an auditor. Being that that's what I do at work, there's a lot of auditing, it's, we change out auditors about every two years. Um, it's pretty rare that we stick with the same one over and over and over again. And so um, I I would say that it would be a really good idea to look at a new auditor starting this year. Uh, not even to put the year contract, but maybe see if we can get something. I mean, it's a month or two from now, we can, we can have a contract, I'm sure on the table that gets them done. So I I just think it's a good year to look at a new, a new auditor.
Okay, any other questions to this? No, not seeing any, okay. Uh, my personal opinion is I'm I'm good with the year uh to get everything organized and then put it out for a bid and let's see if we can get something at the table. I know it's going to take a little time. I don't want to put the pressure on you guys and everything else to be doing that, so I think a year is fair. Uh, if we can see if we can extend that contract for a year and then go from there. I think that's fair enough. Um, how do you all feel? I mean, does that sound like something you can deal with? Everybody's nodding their head. I'm, you're good? Okay, good. Oh, Jerry, you got something?
So my my question is, is if, um, is is there a time constraint on approving this uh, this contract? I mean, if there isn't. So if we, if we, if we just say we we want to go for a year right now and then it comes back that they they'll only do three years, um, there's no window that we might miss to, um, okay.
I think we have some time, so I'll, I'll be sure to get in touch with them this week and see what they say about that.
Okay, okay, great. We appreciate that. Thank you, Steph. Okay, that's all I have on that. Council business, if there's no more questions, we'll move along to the next citizen and group comment. Do I have anybody in the holder?
No, I don't see anybody with their hands raised.
Well, I miss the good old days of those three hour meetings. I don't know what I'm going to do here. Uh.
Well, we still have another one coming up.
That's right, that's right, okay. Uh, then uh, we will move out of that and go for the mayor council reports and comments. So we'll start off with Charity. You have anything tonight, Charity?
Um, I have nothing new to report. Um, I believe that the school board will be meeting um this coming Thursday, so uh, I look forward to meeting with them during this week and um, yeah, that's all I have to report. Just want to thank city staff for putting together yet another large, um, especially Matt put a lot of work into this one. Um, so appreciate him and all his work that he did on this and um, yeah, thanks for the great meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, let's go with Joel.
You guys are gonna hurry up meetings with me because I have, especially a friend, I have lots of stuff to go through her, but I'll get better, I promise. So one of the things I want to bring up is the electronic device use policy. Um, there's something in there I had some questions about the staff for and I wonder if we can get, if I can get to answers on this and I know I have to sign this and so, um. There's a portion in here that talks about uh, uh, it's section J on this one. Um, it says, uh. No, let me ever gather one. Oh, sorry, it's section H. Um, counselors should recognize that the documents that exist on the electronic device from the production of the document, internet uh usage, email is subject to disclosure under the Oregon Records Public Law. Counselors shall not delete any emails, mail messages, or any public records related to the, their role as city councilor members. Now that, all that's fine. The part that gets me and I'm I'm questioning is, unless specifically authorized by city staff, I'm kind of curious why city staff would have the authority to delete something over the city council.
Because we have the retain, the state retention schedule, so it's up to city staff for all city records to follow that schedule and to get rid of things that, once they meet that schedule. So if you have a group of emails, for example, um. You can, you can uh get ahold of Sadie and she looks up the O R S and then she tells you if you've kept that long enough. So like, um, most emails, if they don't have anything to do with a grant or it depends what the topic is, after a year, we can delete those. But we have to put it on a form that we are deleting all of Counselor Licky's miscellaneous emails from January first twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty twenty, or whatever it is. We have to have a record that we deleted those and what they were.
Okay.
So that's why if you contact city staff, they can tell you if you can delete it or not.
That 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 makes sense, okay. Um. And I think the other question I have on here, there's a lot of uh on this electronic device use policy, there's a lot of reiterations about um, the that are already laws that we have to follow. And I'm kind of curious why you require a city council to sign, um, basically stating they're going to follow these when they're already. Basically stating they're going to follow these when they're already common laws, just out of curiosity too.
I guess it's just been for our protection to be sure everyone is aware of them because. They might be common because you work in the business, but to someone that doesn't work in the business. Uh, they might not be uh as common or they understand what what they are.
That's a fair assessment, okay. That's that's all the questions I had on there, so I'll make sure I get that to you. Um. And then I had one more thing to to bring up and uh I know this is a touchy one, but. Uh, it's a it's something to and I know we'll have to discuss it further, but um the chapter two thirty three, the diversity, equity and inclusion committee. Um, there are some issues in the in the wording and in the description and how that that was put together. And I think it's something that we really need to discuss before we start assigning people to it. Um, because it it just feel like it's um it's got some errors in the code that does and the the way that the committee was formed. Um, that really needs to revisit it because it doesn't have the same level of uh. Structure that all our other committee uh committees are. Uh, developed and designed to, and um so. I'd like to see if the council can discuss that a little further, maybe try to get some of these things uh a little more clarified. Um, and a little more structured to it before we start, you know, putting the committee into action. Um, I'm all for getting a committee like this put together. I just want it to be built like every other committee out there with a lot of uh. A lot of structure to it. Such as, you know, when a kitty committee is put on there, it shall adopt its own rules for the appointment of members and the frequency of conduct conduct of its own meetings. It should be the city council should be voting to have those rules in place ahead of time when we're forming a committee. Rather than saying to a committee, hey, you make up your own rules of what you want, we're just going to write you a blank check to it. So I think we should be holding the eh every committee to the same standards. Uh, that we like, for example, like the Chad, the Chad one is written great. I love the way it's written. It was very well defined as far as what they're meant to do, what their expectations are, what the limitations are, what they should be producing, when they should be producing it. What the rules are for meeting. I think the same thing should be done for this uh. For the uh DEIC committee as well is have that same level of of structure to it. And I think that's we should be expected of any city council. So I I said, I'm all for having it. I just think we need to review. You know, putting some of those requirements in there. Plus, I mean, it could be argued. Some of the statements in here by. And I get what the purpose of the DEIC is for, but it should be including everybody. That includes. It doesn't, and any of these descriptions here doesn't at all identify someone who's Caucasian. That Caucasian needs to be considered in any sort of equal. Uh, as much as anyone else that's in a lower, that's in a uh historically underrepresented group. Yes, they there's they definitely need to be equal across the board for everybody. There should be nobody left out. When we're considering every policy, everything that we do in the city, every person has an equal. Under 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 God, everybody, everybody's eyes, everybody's equal and created equal. And so we should be applying that to everybody, not leaving out. Uh, just because someone's Caucasian, they don't have the same type of lens that they should be putting on there as well, so. That's when it comes down to this committee, I think that they that the the. Council should really be looking at it with a with a truly equal lens to make sure that nobody. Is left out and that we're actually writing it to a solid structure. Um, and that's that's all I had for for that one. Thanks, you guys. I do appreciate all your help.
Yeah, so we adopted this, the council did uh review this for. Boy, I think a couple of months before they actually came to an agreement on. On the wording in this, it was something that was vetted and open meetings and stuff. Um, with none of our um al- almost every one of our committees says they get to. Do their own rules and meeting dates and and that, so I mean, this one was uh. Kind of uh copied from those other ones to for the exact thing. Um. If the council wants to sit down and hash out rules for every single committee and. When you want them to meet and how you want them to, most of them have adopted Robert rules of order, just like the council has. Um. You know, we've never had a problem with it.
Let let me clarify a little more. The appointment of how it's going to appoint its own members, that means. That from what I read on that, that the membership requirements that the council set, they have the opportunity to change those how they see fit. Without the council input on it or. And it's not just the that part of how it's formed, but also the all the responsibilities that it's talking about below. Um, on there as well. Those those will also need to be, for example. When it says provide input and advice for the city, what does input actually mean? That's not well clarified out there. Is that input to change something the council might do? Or is that solely in an advisory role? But then if that's an advisory role, that would be. You know, double Nintendo uh putting a double wording in there, so what's that actually mean? That's it brings question to my mind as a counselor. What that really means, and I just wanted some clarification on that and just to make sure that we're actually not rushing through something. When I see, I looked at all all the other committees and how they were formed and the information behind them, and they're very well structured. I just felt this one was kind of. Rushed through without that same structure and the conversation, then I sat through all the meetings. And so I I know I know what they were else. I was a I was a non-council member at the time, obviously, but I sat through there and I had all these same questions. And I felt most of those weren't answered at the time, so now I'm here to ask those questions and make sure that we can, as it can, as a as a council, we can be unified. In creating something that I believe is a very, very important committee to have. I believe it's very important to have this, but I believe it needs to be done right, so that way everybody feels good about it. And that everybody feels that we can actually, you know, get a committee that's going to make sure that we're fair across the board.
So Joel, if you can send me your concerns in an email so I can give those to Taylor. We are in the process of recruiting for that committee, but it is easy for um the council to. Change something, but I'd like staff to take a look at what your suggestions are. And we can compare those with other committees and and then get something back to you. Um, I know Taylor had announced that I think it was the retreat that we are recruiting for those people now. Um, and that you guys will see those, the March eighth for appointment if if we have enough, so. I think we can go ahead with the recruitment of people, but um I think we can also look at those. Um, you know, any suggestions and put those out to the full council once we get those. In writing so we can study them a little bit for.
I will, I would love to get that out to you. I'll make sure I get that out to you in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Joel. Uh, Katie, you're up.
Um, well, I it has been a couple of weeks. Um, I wanted to uh formally. On public record, express my disappointment. In the decision that the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners made recently regarding the uh potential due diligence of the Red Fox Motel project. That was being proposed by the Clackamas County Housing Authority. I'm really, really disappointed that the Board of County Commissioners would base their decision on. Uh, less than one percent of our population reacting emotionally. Um, I wish that every person in Estacada understood that. The Red Fox Motel project that was being proposed was not the. Housing shelter or the homeless shelter that you had in your head. Um, I hope that everybody understood. Also, that right now the how the Red Box Motel is already a homeless shelter. The only difference is that. Those people don't have any uh connection to resources. They don't have any case management. And they're going to continue living in chronic homelessness because they don't have any of those connections. It would have been really nice to see the housing authority come in with the resources, the plentiful resources that they have and the case management that they have. In order to help the people that are at Red Fox right now and all the plethora of people that are going to come in after them. Um, for me personally, the the most exciting part about the potential of that project was not. The transitional shelter that was origin that was the uh initial proposed purpose. But it was actually the housing that could have followed it. Um, I wish that everybody understood that this conversation has been happening for a very long time in a lot of different venues and a lot of different outlets. Um, if you feel like you have not been a part of that conversation, I apologize. That conversation is happening. If you want to be a part of that conversation, reach out to me, reach out to uh the there's. There's quite a few city staff members that have been a part of this conversation for a number of years now. And I'm ha- I'm happy to help connect you to that conversation if you feel like it's a conversation you're missing out on and you want to participate in. I'm happy to connect you with any educational resources that are out there to help you better understand. Um, the 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 impact that the lack of housing diversity is having on our community right now, as well as the impact that it's going to have in the future. Um, I am not giving up on this project. I am really hoping that. Um, since the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners has directed their housing authority staff to continue looking for projects that will qualify. For the project turnkey or the 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 turnkey grant. Um, I'm really hoping that we can get Red Fox back onto the table because, to be honest with you, it is the only property in Estacada that qualifies for that funding source. Um, that being said, if you feel strongly as I do about bringing affordable housing. And diversified housing types into Estacada. Please reach out to me. I would love to have you a part of the conversation, invite you into the venues that the that this conversation is being had in. Um, there are lots of people that have been having these conversations for a number of years and I would love to include you in that conversation. Um, that being said, there are appropriate ways of having this conversation and there are not as appropriate ways in having this conversation. Um, I would like to think that all conversations are only appropriate when they're productive. And if anybody would like to have productive conversation to. Housing diversity in Estacada, affordable housing, market rate housing, workforce housing, or any kind of housing. I could talk for days and weeks and years on end about housing and I would love to talk to you about it. Um, I just wanted to to formally express my my disappointment in the decision made by the Board of County Commissioners. And the reasons behind their decision, um, again. Facing their decision on less than one percent of our population reacting emotionally and not necessarily based on. The facts of the proposal before the board, then. That is what I really wanted to say tonight, and I look forward to having lots of conversations in the future about housing. And honestly, as much as I saw that decision as a a sort of defeat. Knowing that this has been my number one goal on the council since I took this seat in January twenty nineteen, I want to bring housing to Estacada. I want to bring it to Estacada for the teachers, for the nurses, for the kids who are in college. For myself too, I'm a single mom and I went through a divorce and I wanted to continue living. In Estacada because my kids go to school here, their dad lives here. Estacada is where I have family. I didn't want to leave Estacada. And I needed housing too, and I still need housing because. I I ended up in something out of desperation and and not out of uh just, you know, it would work best for my family. Because those are the those are the types of decisions that renters in Estacada have to make these days. Is not, well, is this the best fit for my family? No, it's, well, is it available because I that's the only thing I could apply for? And now I've outgrown it and I'm still looking for housing. Um, I'm not the only person in this scenario, you guys. There are lots of people who lose their housing for a lot of different reasons in Estacada. And so when you think in your mind, oh, homeless shelter, they must be busing in people from Portland. That is not the case. We're talking about your neighbor who experienced a kitchen fire and that kitchen fire has made their home now uninhabitable. And so when that, when they're faced with that that scenario before them. They can't live in Estacada anymore. There's no other options. And I and that's sad. That is really the reality of the situation. I really don't know how else to explain it to to anyone to get them to understand, but. Um, again, I could talk about housing for days and I look forward to this conversation in the future. Thank you all and I appreciate you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, uh, Justin.
Uh, thanks, everyone. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, Paul?
Uh, I just wanted to add a uh one thing here. I've been having some conversations with the folks working up river just to get a timeline of how long it'll take before things will open up. Uh, maybe to advocate for our businesses to see if we can get them to open up things any quicker as well too, so. Uh, great conversations, Jackie Gross with the Forest Service, Anna Hansen with or Henson with ODOT, Tony Dental with PGE Parks. Um, it sounds like ODOT is the real driver here of what's going on up there. Um, and we talked about maybe opening it up on the weekends, which I don't see that happening, or even opening it up in stages, opening it up to Moore Creek. Uh, Hole in the Wall, you know, just just as as they make progress as well too. So these are some of the conversations that we've had. But they are very interested in coming to a city council meeting in the future, um, especially Anna and Jackie. And we tossed out a potential March date, so I was wondering Denise if if something could be done there to. Uh, arrange for them to come and just give a presentation as to the progress that's being done there and then the potential opening as well up river. Right now they're targeting end of spring, early summer, which I think is great news. Earlier would be better, um, but that's what they're looking at at this point.
Um, Matt and I talked today about that and we're trying to get him here February, your next meeting for a workshop.
They we what we talked about, uh, what. Anna had suggested, maybe conversations with her as you get going, they would know a lot more in a month. Uh, more than they know now based on the phase that they just entered into. Um.
Okay, well, we can move him to March eighth. I'll ta- I'll discuss that with Matt, but he's going to be asking everybody.
Great, great. Thank you.
Okay, I think Jerry, you're up next.
Um, I want to share in the disappointment uh that Katie expressed. Um, I feel that it was a missed opportunity or. Maybe not so much a missed opportunity, um, at. You know, that. Or maybe an opportunity that we can bring back, but I I think the Red Fox uh. Project would have been a a very good project for Estacada. I think it would have meant a lot to the community. Um, there um, there's not. Just the, you know, it wouldn't just help the current um fire uh. Disaster, it wouldn't just help. I mean, we're going to have when the the moratorium on uh foreclosures and um. Uh, rental, you know, when that is lifted, um, there's going to be a lot of people, a lot of people that are going to be forced out of their homes and I think that. You know, there's a lot more local than we would even than we would even expect. Um, I think that uh. Uh, this was an opportunity for the Estacada community to have somewhere for our community members to um go to get resources and uh. Um, like I said, I just, I learned a lot in a con- a long conversation with Katie and uh I had my reasons before and now I share it. Uh, just about every one of Katie's reasons. Um, uh, it's a. Uh, I I strongly recommend if you haven't had a conversation with Katie, have one. She's a wealth of knowledge. Um, when it comes to this and uh she knows a lot more than, you know, any of us do about this subject, so. Uh, have a conversation with her. She's open to it. Um, I want to thank uh I I like always, I want to thank staff. You guys are amazing. Um, everything that you do, um, just makes everything, makes it easier for us. Um, Matt's presentations tonight, we're we're on point, awesome like always and uh, you know, just thank you guys. You you guys do an amazing job, so. Um, and thanks for everybody. Thanks, everybody that came to the meeting. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you, Jerry. Well, that was a. Uh, wealth of knowledge there all the way around. That took some time. Uh, I'm just gonna cut and run here. I I. I don't have anything tonight. There was enough in that to to think about. So I appreciate all of you and uh I'm going to adjourn the city council and then we're going to move into the next meeting, so thank you.